Good afternoon. This is the Monday, May 20th deliberative meeting. It's a little after 2:00 PM. Called this meeting to order. I almost forgot that part. We have all of our council persons present. And I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of council, members of the public, welcome to the May 20th, 2024 deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. The following resolutions are before council for consideration today. Resolution 43. To authorize a cooperation agreement between the City of Chester and the Chester Economic Development Authority for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 as a requirement of federal regulations. Resolution 44. To authorize amendment in the addendum to the master services agreement with UHY Consulting, Inc., that said services shall not exceed the budget of an amount of $130,000 for the duration of the ARPA project. Resolution 45. To authorize amended demolition fund agreement DF 2360A with Delaware County Council Office of Housing and Community Development for the demolition of the following blighted structures located within the City of Chester. Resolution 46. To authorize award of the demolition fund 2360A Delaware County Demolition Program 2023 Chester City Demolition Contract Number 1 as amended April 3, 2024 for the City of Chester to BRB Contractors, Inc. for the amount of $195,751. Resolution 47. To authorize engagement of Tokini Law 117, 119, Dollar Street, Media PA 19063 as an assistant solicitor for the City of Chester to provide municipal legal counsel and to handle general legal matters. Resolution 48. To authorize entering into a blend and extended option for 18 months to negotiate the best rate, electric rates not to exceed 0.06572 per kilowatt hour. Resolution 49. To authorize annual action plan for the fiscal year 2024 for CDBG and home programs. Resolution 50. To authorize issuance of a road opening permit to FICO for the installation of new natural gas services with the line extending 1,200 feet on 24th Street from Chestnut to Upland. In addition to the aforementioned resolutions, there are no ordinances. That would conclude the agenda for today.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Does council have any questions or comments on any of the agenda items?
Resolution number 44. Can we explain that?
Yes. We actually, you already approved the contract with UHY. UHY again is our ARPA compliance company or consultants that have been doing the compliance for us. What we are doing is solidifying the dollar amount. What we did before is just approve the contract based on the hourly rate. But since we're trying to close the ARPA budget, what we did is put an actual dollar amount on the contract now. So the contract before was, like I said, it was just based on the hourly rate.
Okay. So is this a not to exceed 130,000 or is this a?
No, we're saying that it is. That's the contract is 130,000, yes. What we did was took an estimate based off their hourly rate, based off the next couple of years and the last year of the 2026 where they have to do the compliance. They also do our treasury reporting every quarter. So we took an estimate of what they kind of charged over the last quarter and a quarter before that. And we budgeted for 130,000. We feel that should be a reasonable amount based off past expenditures.
If by chance that final treasury reporting goes beyond the April 2027, would we have to revisit this?
We probably would, but again, can't predict that.
We think it should be wrapped up by then?
It should be.
Okay.
We're required to be, so. And that's what we did. We did until January of 2027.
April.
April 2027, yes.
And I have another question on resolution 47. The assistant city solicitor. I looked at the contract and the contract is for $100,000 a year. However, when I looked at the city ordinance, we have a, the assistant city solicitor salary is 93,000.
That is correct. It's 93,959. And I've advised Kilkeny Law According.
Okay, so are we going to amend this contract to state that?
Yes.
Before Wednesday?
Yes.
You already spoke with Kilkeny?
Yes.
And he agreed?
Yes.
Okay.
To, I believe, Ms. Gaffney, this is resolution number 45 with the property addresses for demolition. I know this seems the always, I shouldn't say always, but if something comes off, then it has to be kind of refigured out again. Is this a final list? Are we gonna, is this it?
I believe this is it for the county.
Yeah.
The contract, so we have some changes, but we, Delaware County already started on this.
This, yeah, this is the final.
Okay.
We had our inspector go out there to make sure.
Okay.
Did Delaware County provide a timeline on when they expect these listed properties to be finished, completed?
I think no contract, but we have a contract with the R B.
Yeah, it's based off our contract that we have with them. And we're looking at within the next 12 months to have these finalized.
Thank you.
And just, just for your awareness, even though they're on the demo list, if an individual comes in and pulls a permit and has legitimate plans that have been third-party reviewed, they could come off this list. So Mayor, to answer your question, this is the final based off our last inspection, but it doesn't prohibit, because again, they have 12 months to get all these demoed. But someone could come in within that timeframe with proper plans, third-party review plans and permit, and they can be removed off the list.
What would be the procedure for that, for them coming off, just to show up with?
They have to come up with the, they have to actually have third-party reviewed plans showing that they're going to fix the property up, actually pull their permits and pull their permits, pay for their permits, and that would be justification for them coming off the demo list.
I mean, that would be a good thing. My concern was that, I know sometimes that holds up the funding if, but when you say that's final, that means we, we got the check from the county and we're, we're knocking them down.
Well, what we do is we don't actually get a check from the county. We actually, once we do the demolition, we send the invoice to the county and the county
But the county has approved all these?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess that's kind of where I'm going.
Yes.
We finally got a group that they've approved, then we can move forward with demolition.
Yes.
And if something comes off, then we've decided that the chances are that if somebody takes it off, they're either going to fix up the property or, I guess, the chances of them knocking it down themselves are pretty slim. They would probably only take it off because they want to save the building.
Do we have a amount for each, each demolition?
I believe there is. I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it's over in LNI. I believe they have that amount.
For each one?
Is it possible for council to get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman.
Anything else from council?
I do have two things that's not on the agenda. One would be the expenditure report and the budget, or how, how you come along with that? I know you said May we would have it, but I'm not sure what date or what that timeframe looks like.
Very good question. We have the format, we have it ready. Since Jim is not with us now, he was the one putting that together. But you will have something. I can get you something either by, by Wednesday or, let, let me look and I'll, I'll send you an email. I just, our new CFO started today.
Okay.
And I don't want to put that on him right away to take those numbers and plug it into the new budget format. So let me just talk with him, see where they're at, and talk with the other accountants downstairs and see what we can generate for you. But I, you will have something in May.
Thank you.
Can you touch base, excuse me, Council, go ahead.
Uh, you sure?
Yeah, I can, I have a question about resolution 50.
Oh, well, yeah, no, because this is not, my question is not for the resolution, so you can.
Can you touch base and, I guess, provide a little bit more information on resolution 50 on the road opening and what Pico exactly will be doing, the timeline? They've, they've given the city on when that project will be completed, so that way we're a little bit more informed rather than just saying a street opening.
Okay, so I don't have that with me in, in front of me, but I can tell you that it is the new, where they're putting in the gas lines. So they'll send that to us, they'll tell us exactly how many feet they're doing. Again, timeline, I don't know that, but I'll see. Mark, do, did they give us a timeline yet? No. But that's one thing we do have to do better at is trying to get, tell us what your timeline is going to be, how long the street's going to be like this. But we'll see what we can do to get that more pinned down.
Thank you. And my reason being for asking that question is, like you said, just having that transparency and the communication on what's going to be done and exactly how long it's going to take, so that way the residents aren't, you're just up in the air when it comes to what's getting done in the city. So, thank you.
Is there, is there something in place for the residents to know?
Well, Pico's supposed to do that. They're supposed to notify that. But what we do is we'll put it online to notify that this, there's going to be that street opening. But we'll, it's supposed to be on them to notify the, the residents of that area. I don't think they always give us a set timeframe.
But you're saying you'll put it, it's going to be put on the city's website?
We can definitely put it on our city's website.
So my second thing is, in the past, the city Parks and Recreation has always done a Fourth of July concert and fireworks. This year, the only thing that is allocated in the budget is $17,000 for fireworks. However, the Philadelphia Union and Harris Casino will be doing fireworks. And so my suggestion would be is that we don't spend $17,000 on fireworks to do our own fireworks, is that we try to partner with either the Harris or the soccer stadium. And maybe the soccer stadium, so that way we can, they provide the fireworks and we can use that $17,000 to provide some entertainment. And like I said, in the past, we've always had entertainment. This probably will be one of, maybe one of the first years that we don't do entertainment. But Chief Leitner said he would speak to someone down at the soccer stadium and see if maybe we can work something out where we can do the entertainment. And they, they're already doing the fireworks, so maybe we can partner with them. So we can still give the residents a Fourth of July show if we can pull something off in time. So I just wanted to have a conversation with council to see y'all thoughts on that.
Well, I'm going to jump in right away. I'm with you with not having to pay for fireworks, for sure. That's always been a sore spot for me, to spend, you know, $12,000 for a 15-minute show when we do have a, a couple entities every year that do fireworks. Now, I have to say that what Harris does and what the union does may not fall on the Fourth of July, that physical date. What the union does is the first home game after the Fourth of July is when they shoot off their fireworks. So it may not be the Fourth and most likely won't be the Fourth. I doubt if they play at home on the Fourth. Harris has been a mixed bag. Sometimes they do it on the Fourth, sometimes they don't. But I'm all in favor of tabling spending city money for fireworks. But what you do with the money, you know, to have a more entertaining show, and I think the city really deserves it, that's really what the money should be spent on is a, an event, not, not if you can put that money somewhere else for fireworks. I mean, I'm, I'm of the mindset that it's either, you know, that we either fully support Juneteenth or Fourth of July. It's a little tough to do both when they're like three or four weeks apart. But if nothing else, I am not in support of, of spending city money on fireworks. I support your, your, the direction you want to go with this.
I am also in support of doing something for the city as far as Fourth of July, as far as entertainment, everything like that. The city deserves it. I think it's something that will bring more people that are not even from our community to our community to, you know, show off what we have to offer. Obviously, we don't have to spend our own money, that's always positive, but, you know, I'm in full support of actually doing something for the community. To the point of, it wasn't part of the conversation, but since the mayor brought it up, Juneteenth, I think that is also important for the city.
Yes.
In that, you know, we should try to find out whatever we can do to partner with whoever we can to, you know, make both of those events as special as possible, even though I understand the close proximity they are in time. So I don't know what that might necessarily look like, but I'm just voicing my, excuse me, I'm just voicing my opinion in regards to the support in the manner of both the celebrations.
And I know Juneteenth, they've already have that planned out. They already have an artist band that's performing, so that's pretty much set for this year. Now, moving forward, maybe next year, if we wanted to provide additional resources or, you know, help them to get a bigger artist or whatnot, I think that's something that we might can look, look into.
And I would say the community, I'm sorry, the community has always hearkened back to the days of the Riverfront Ramble. So if we were to do something later in the summer, so that, that, I think everything's on the table right now.
Yeah.
I will fully support not having the city pay for fireworks. That's, that's where I draw the line. Anything else is, is open, open game to me. But I know Riverfront Ramble maybe later in the summer is, is something that people have asked for over the last few years.
Well, I'm also in agreement with not spending money on the fireworks, so I'm in agreement with that. But I think that Juneteenth is equally as important as the Fourth of July. And so I don't want it to be a thing, we choose one or the other, but we find a way to definitely support something around Juneteenth, because that's important for our community members as well.
I'm really happy we're having this discussion.
Well, our, our community is, they will really look forward to having something on Fourth of July. So if we can partner with Harris or the stadium, you know, and, you know, they're doing the fireworks and we do entertainment, that's good. But we can't get away with not doing anything at all because the community will be looking forward to some type of entertainment. And I know fireworks was always the big thing with the community, but, you know, if we can partner, save that money and partner with someone else, then I'm for it. But as long as we communicate to the community what's going on, what we're looking at.
I see y'all two smiling. What, talk to me.
We're smiling because Janelle has to do the contract and I'm smiling because we have $17,000. And we have two events. We have the Juneteenth and we have Fourth, so the question.
The, the Juneteenth is, that's already taken care of.
It is.
That's already in place and whatever partnership agreement that we already have with them, that's already, that's already done. So I don't think we need to look at the Juneteenth for this year any further. Maybe moving forward for next year, we can look at providing additional resources. Or when it's time that we begin to discuss budget, we can discuss that. But I think now would be the time to talk about Fourth of July or if we're going to try to do a Riverfront Ramble, you know, so. But I, but like Councilwoman West said, people always look forward to Chester doing something on Fourth of July because, you know, it's always been a celebration at Chester Park or whatnot. We've always had some kind of entertainment, you know, and it's the community to look forward to it. A lot of people can't, don't have money or they don't travel to Philadelphia or to other areas to celebrate Fourth of July. The city celebrates Fourth of July at Chester Park. That's what we've been doing for the last, since I was a little boy.
Right.
So.
Is there a question about a contract for fireworks already this year? Have we paid for it? Have we have a contract with?
We do have a contract and we have a down payment, down payment for it. But that's, that's the dilemma is there is no entertainment for the Fourth. And that's what Councilman Green and I were discussing, is to talk with, I'm going to give a call to the union and also to Harris to see what they're doing for the Fourth.
Are we committed to the funds that we have contracted for though, down payment for the fireworks?
We are.
Okay.
So what we were going to do, since we don't have entertainment for the Fourth, like I said, we're going to talk with Harris, talk with the union to see what they have going on. But the thought, the thought was, since we're running on timeline, is put the fireworks with Juneteenth. Since they already have entertainment, they have everything, put the fireworks with Juneteenth. For the Fourth, again, I haven't had the conversation with the union or Harris, but I told Councilman Green, today or tomorrow, I will get ahold of them and find out what they're doing, if they're doing anything. And if so, how can we partner and figure out what we can do from there? But I will need your support. I will need, if that means that we got to knock on a couple of doors to get some additional funds to bring in entertainment for the Fourth. But I'm in 100% agreement with what Councilman Green and you guys have said is, we have to partner with them. There's, if we got three fireworks going on at the same time, it's, let's be smart with our resources. So even if we provided the entertainment, they provide the fireworks, let's do that. But let me reach out to them and then we'll get back to you all and let you know what they said. And we can kind of strategically plan what we want to do from there, if that's okay. All right.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Anything else on the agenda from council? How about our departments? Any comments, questions?
I just have one question. So we gave the fireworks company a down payment?
We, we normally have to do that because we have to make sure we're locked in.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have the down payment.
Is it a non-refundable depen, uh, deposit?
I have to double check on that.
Okay. That may be something we want to look into to see, even if we're able, I mean, how we can get out of that contract if we was to move forward in a different direction. So we might want to look at everything to see.
Yeah.
You know, what's best.
We'll look at it.
Thank you.
In regards to the departments, I did have a question for Mr. Alexander. Are you still Streets, Streets Department, sorry, I drew a blank. Parks, Recs, Streets Department?
Public Works.
Public Works, excuse me. I, I couldn't get Public Works out of my head to save my life, I'm sorry. Did we have a check, check in with Avenue Estates? There was some residents that were concerned about Penn Dot not finishing the work on the roads as far as drawing the lines?
No, I just got back today.
I got, got you. Thank you. That was all I had. I just had a few residents that were still concerned and I wanted to bring their concerns to you all, so. Thank you so much.
There is a lot of like little black rocks coming up here on Avenue of Estates in the street. Is that from the asphalt?
Asphalt.
Okay.
We'll get somebody.
I do want to say something about, in regards to the Public Works and our residents. I've seen an increasing amount of participation with our residents in regards to keeping their areas of their homes clean, and I wanted to applaud their efforts. I go around and I look and, and people inbox me and they ask me, hey, can you come check this out? And they're doing a phenomenal job to go along with the Streets Department cleaning it up. So people are taking, oh, people are taking care of their properties. The one thing I would ask about is the property owners that don't take care of their properties. Do we have a blight ordinance? I was reading a little bit about it in regards to lots that are not taken care of. Some are behind churches, some are behind houses, some are on the side of houses, and the property owners are not taking care of that issue. There's something we could do about that because our residents are doing their part along with the city. So what, what can be done about the blight?
Well, we do have an ordinance for that. And the inspectors should be, when they see that, we should be sending a violation letter to the owner of the property. Most times though, they don't respond, especially if it's a vacant lot, they don't respond in time. So what we do is we'll clean it up and we, we need to do a better job internally, which we're working on, is once we do that, we need to invoice them. And if they don't respond to the invoice, then we're supposed to lean the property.
Yes.
So we, we're working on that process to really refine that process to make it better, more streamlined should say, so we can really hold them accountable. But that's the process. The ordinance you guys have on the books already exists, that's what we're working on.
And so can we even stop them from doing business in the city if they're not taking care of their property? And I'll say that because, and I'll say it out publicly, Gallo Brothers owns a lot of our lots in the city of Chester, one is next to my house. And I pay to have it cut because they don't respond. Rodents, raccoons, groundhog, you name it, it was in there. And so that's a, a health hazard, not only a health hazard, but it's, it's just a mess. And so when you're trying to clean up your area of where you live and now you have to as a resident pay for it, we can't invoice them, but you're telling me that the city can invoice them?
The city invo, the city can invoice them.
Oh, I wish I would have known that ahead of time.
The city can invoice them. And what happens though, we invoice them, they don't pay the invoice.
Lean the property?
Yeah, but we have to go through a process. We have to invoice them, wait for them, give them 30 days, they don't respond, we have to invoice them again, second notice. If they don't respond, then we lean.
Okay.
But yeah, we can do that.
So then we can just start the process on those who don't want to keep their properties clean?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as you guys, again, you know me, I don't have a problem enforcing the ordinance. Just, you know, those are the things that you all have to be aware of, what we're doing. And we're trying to do a better job internally of tracking that so you can have the, the data to show like this is the number of properties we've leaned, this is how much is outstanding to the city. So we're, that's why I'm saying internally, we're trying to work on that so we can make sure you have all the right information you need in order to address that. The person, the company you named, we, we're aware of them. There is a state statute that we just haven't really dug our, dug into yet that could go after their assets. But that's something that, again, I just haven't had the time to really talk with Ken about and, and really have the staff to enforce that. But we want to get a better understanding of that state statute that allows us to go after their, their assets.
Yeah, it's a conversation.
I suggest that for larger developers where we know they have other properties. It doesn't make sense, I mean, the lean is one remedy, but it makes sense if they have assets.
To attach, yeah, we can attach their assets.
Do we have liens, currently have liens?
We, we do, but like I said.
You know how many?
Internally, that's what we're trying to work on now, is really get that information.
It's a significant legal process. And if we were in a place that leaned for every bit of work that the city does, you would probably need an additional two assistant solicitors. And it's also costly, so we're reviewing that in terms of how, if there is a way to streamline it and cheapen it, but it's, it's a process. It's a process to lean, place it.
And that's another reason you see me revamping the fee ordinance. Because if we go clean up a property, say we go dispose of it, we cut it, it costs us $300, $500. To place a lien, what is it, 75, $100? What's the lien cost? I don't remember off the top. Yeah, so we just say roughly $100 to place the lien. And for most people, they just ignore that, right? It's, they're not going to pay any attention to that. So the way I'm trying to do with the fee ordinance is attach the administrative fee. But again, we can attach anything that we, that's absorbent. We have to be able to justify why we attach these fees. So an administrative fee could be added onto that, plus we're looking at the labor. If it's taking three guys to go out there, what's their hourly rate, the fuel, the time, the dumping fee? So we're accumulating all that to what the real costs are. So when we attach the lien or send the invoice, we can send the invoice that we can stand behind and say we can justify these costs. So that's what you see us trying to do.
There's two additional problems. One of them is that the majority of these properties are owned by LLCs. And there's no requirement in Pennsylvania that an LLC disclose the owner or the location of the owner. So what happens is, many of these properties that are abandoned, the lien is really almost meaningless because number one, we can't find the owner. And number two, to put a property up for sheriff's sale may cost more for the sheriff's sale to collect the lien than the actual value of the property sometimes. So it's a difficult situation.
But not impossible, right?
Not impossible, and certainly with larger developers like the developer you referenced. We know in other, like in Montgomery County, they have, you know, quadrupled the amount of properties than they have here.
Like you said, it's not impossible, but we're just trying to tighten up what we have, make sure we can really substantiate what we're doing. We're not turning and saying we're not going to do it. I mean, we, again, like I said, I want to look at the state statute about going after assets, especially when you're LLC. We have to put teeth into this because that's the only way we're going to get compliance. So we're working on the backend of stuff to make sure we can really, when things happen, we can account for them, we have the information. So when we do try to go after that, we can give legal everything that they need in order to go after that company.
Thank you.
Can I ask, the property at 25th and Providence, where we have, it's a big lot there right before you cross over the bridge going into Wallingford. Do you have any updates on where we are with that? Because it seems that they're running a business from there, some type of a lumber business.
You're talking about the big logs there?
Yes.
Yes, we've been working on this for two years.
For years, I know.
For years. DEP was just out here. Mary, did you go on tour with them?
I did. It's about three weeks ago, DEP, DCED saw that lot. They were as alarmed as we are that it was allowed to occur. And that's it. They saw it. So they know it, they know it exists. I won't say they came up with any solutions.
I know there had been a problem with the original owner. The original owner missed the deeds or something like that. He passed away. He was incarcerated, then he passed away, and then his son took it over. And I don't know if the son is still the owner, but then that was under an LLC too. And we didn't have a valid address for it, you know. But I was wondering if there were any, you know, any activities of late, you know. Because the owners, the property owners who are right next door there, it's a nice street, you know. Owners keep up their properties and what have you. And then you've got this situation here on the corner for everybody to see, you know. And one time, it was on a holiday, the son had a bonfire there. And I got a call from one of the neighbors. I was in Delaware and I went, came up and we, fire department was there, police, everybody. And they made them put the bonfire out, you know. But now they're running some type of a business there. They claim they weren't, but they are.
Well, for all of council, I can tell you what we've done. Every department has used their ordinance to try to go after this company. Fire, Public Works, LNI. So we're trying to use all of our ordinance as we can. We've sent compliant, we've sent violation letters, we've contacted. So that's why we're hoping that DEP can get involved or EPA because it's right by the creek there as well.
Right.
And if those logs decide to slide down there, you're going to create a dam and cause flooding. So we're hoping that, we're trying to push DEP and EAP or EPA to get here and get involved and try to do something as well. But right now, we've exhausted everything we can do from a compliance standpoint. The only other option that we have, and I talked with the team about it, but it's going to be costly for us. And I just don't, we don't have the tools, the resources to do it, but we can get the equipment or either hire a company to come and remove those logs, but that's going to be costly for us to do. The problem is, if we do that, how do we stop them or prevent them from putting logs back there again? We talked about trying to block it off, putting cement barriers there, putting a fence up. But from my understanding, they're just taking the clamps, lift it up, and they just drop it over. So we, I mean, that's an option for us, but again, it doesn't prevent them from still putting the logs on there.
Do we have a listed owner to date? I mean, do we have anyone listed as the owner? You don't have a name yet?
We have the same, the same scenario you presented, what same information we have.
It keeps coming back in the mail.
It does. So like I said, we can do that, but again, putting the fence up in the way it slopes, I mean, it'd have to be a huge fence. And does that become eyesore? Does it prevent them from lifting over and putting the logs over that fence? But we're, that's all we can do right now. We'll keep sending compliance or violation letters. We'll still try to stay with EPA and DEP to see if they can help us solve this issue. But we're just tapped out. I just don't know what else to do.
Thank you.
Well, we'll look at that. We'll take a look. But I know that's going to be costly, but we'll get an estimate to see what that cost is to get those removed. See if there's some fencing solution that we can somehow do that and see what that does for a while. But we'll get back to you and let you know cost and what the solution would be for that.
All right, thank you. I'm surprised DeShawn Park didn't come up, but we all noticed that the grass is high there. I don't think we've reached out to them yet, but I will, the Delaware County Industrial Development Authority, and find out what's going on. I've been a little patient, thinking they just haven't started yet, but they haven't started yet. And we're approaching June, so I will take that one on myself.
Also, is there any update or status on a planning director or a community economic development director?
Yes. I had a conversation with both a planner, a planning director, and an economic development director. We are in the process right now of seeing if they're willing to take the offer. I will have a better answer on that probably at the end of the week. But right now, I just spoke to them on Friday. Well, I spoke to one on Friday. I'm waiting to speak to the other one. It's probably in my inbox. I just haven't had a chance to look, but I'm hoping to speak to the economic development person this week.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, anything?
Nothing further.
All right. Meeting adjourned.